You see a number of supporters outside Orlando City Hall holding signs for Regina Hill, the suspended Orlando Commissioner for District 5, facing some criminal charges, was removed from that seat by Governor DeSantis in April of 2024. She has since filed to run for reelection for that seat. Was just inside City Hall, we believe, waiting for news that she qualified to run for that seat. And we now expect to hear from her addressing reporters. You see Ms. Hill there, who just stepped out of the frame. But a large number of supporters as well. And we expect to hear from Regina Hill any minute now on the steps of Orlando City Hall. And we will bring this to you live here on Fox Local.
All right, folks, let's get fired up. All right, all right, all right. All right, all right. Good morning, good morning. And thank you for coming out today. We're here for the kickoff, for the official announcement that Commissioner Regina Hill is in the race. She's back to do the work of the people. I'm Rich Black, I preside this morning. But to get things started, in our tradition, let's bring up Bishop Stubbs, who will give us an opening prayer.
Good afternoon, everyone. There's a beautiful day, but this is what it says in the book of Psalms 133. He say, "Behold, how good and pleasant that brothers dwell together in unity." As we come together in unity to support our Commissioner Hill, we tell God, "Thank you." And we ask you to grant your blessings upon this office in District 5, in the Orlando, Florida area, at this City Hall area. And she take back what she don't have right now. Just take it back. I'm doing a full court press, I don't know what I'm talking about. I'm pressing, I'm pressing. I'm doing a full court press. It's time to press on.
All right, at this time, we would have Rashad Moore, a resident of McValve, to come and just give us a few words of why we need to support Commissioner Regina Hill. Rashad Moore?
Hi, good afternoon, good afternoon. It is my pleasure to be here this afternoon in representation of my community on behalf of Commissioner Regina Hill, who I have absolutely seen do the work in our community night and day. Literally had to fight to actually have the belief and the support of the people. She did not come in there with a handout. She came with a... Well, she didn't come out and come to our community looking for a handout. She came in the community to actually work. And what I've seen from her is that even though she has went through so much, so many attacks, so many lies against her, she has stood the test of times. And we are so grateful that she is still with us, to fight with us. And I just want to speak to the community right now that we need to, we need to, we need to get behind her because we are tired of the lies that we're seeing right now. We are tired of what's going on in our community. We are wanting to see our community back to where we had it. And what we want is we want people to get into position in our community to stop the lies from happening where people are going door to door, passing out lies. We're starting to see people pass out things with our commissioners mugshot pictures. If you receive those type of literature, please be free to call the police. Be free to tell those people to get away from your property because we don't want those lies. I'm here to tell you that Commissioner Hill is back. She is fired up and she's ready to vote. So place your vote for Regina Hill. She hasn't stopped working from day one and she's ready. So please, vote for Regina Hill.
I'm Rich Black, a resident of Lake Sunset Neighborhood Association. I've had the pleasure to work with Commissioner Hill for the last eight, almost nine years. And the dedication every day she's on, even when she's going through struggles, trials, tribulation, Commissioner Hill is for the people. We have experienced some things for the last year. That says to me, we are very concerned about the future. We're concerned about the leadership. For me, it's not an issue of, are you for this person or that person? I'm for the residents and I'm for what's right, I'm for transparency. When you see these seniors here and they are attacked just because they speak out and they speak up and say that, "We don't like this, we don't like the negativity. We don't like how you're defaming black men in our community." And they are attacked and money is taken from their organization just because they speak out. There's an issue with democracy. Democracy is on attack. These people are standing today because they believe in a person who has come to their side on many occasions, stood up when others would not stand up, speak up when others would be conveniently quiet. And they have come and said, "You know what? Enough is enough." They put off doctor's appointments today. They put off medical examinations today to come and stand and be a part of this. At this time, without any further ado, we would like to represent and say to our media and also to all of the residents, Commissioner Regina Hill is back. Hill, 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 Hill.
Thank you all for coming. District 5, are you ready? Are you ready? Today, I stand before you with gratitude and determination like never before. I have officially qualified. If I can vote, I can run. I'm on the ballot. We're on the ballot. The community's on the ballot. A voice that cares is on the ballot. And let me tell you this. I am ready, and I'm ready on day one to keep leading, to keep fighting, and to keep building our community that we love. When I look around this district, I see progress. I see what we have created together. Can I say together? Can you say together? In Paramore, we have revitalized neighborhoods once forgotten. In Mercy Drive, we have brought opportunity and hope. In West Lakes, we have restored pride and rebuilt it from the ground up. We've invested in housing. We've created safe spaces for children. We fought for our seniors and threw it all. Get out here and say, "Threw it all." District 5 is not just surviving under my leadership, it thrived under my leadership. But hear me now. We're not finished. We're not finished. Somebody say it again because I need to hear. We're not finished. We're gonna keep pushing. Fire it up. We're gonna keep pushing for affordable housing so families can stay in neighborhoods that they call home for generations. We're gonna keep fighting for safer streets. We're gonna keep fighting for every child. We're gonna keep fighting for every senior. We're gonna keep fighting for every small business. We are gonna keep fighting for education. We're gonna keep fighting for second chances. And District 5, let me remind you of something powerful that I take to, that the Bible says. "The stone builders rejected has become the cornerstone." Far too long, District 5 was treated like the cornerstone that didn't matter. Far too long, we were overlooked, underfunded, and ignored. But now, we are rising as the cornerstone of this city's future. We are not an afterthought anymore. We are the foundation, we are the strength, we are the cornerstone, I would say, for the city of Orlando. District 5 is. When you look at downtown Orlando, the business district, that's District 5. When you look at all the venues, sports and alike in Paramore, that is District 5. When you look at the west side as it's being developed, that is District 5. When you look at Creative Village, which is now an educational, economic, and housing ecosystem for all, the haves and the have-nots. That is District 5. Where you at, District 5? District 5 is personal to me. You are my family. This is my home. And I would never stop fighting for us. Now let me tell you the difference between me and my opponent. She doesn't hear our voices of the people. She makes decisions for us without us. And under her leadership, we haven't moved forward. District 5 has been appalled, on a pause. Actually, we've gone backwards. But let me say this loud and clear. If it's a fight you won't, it's a fight you're gonna get. Because District 5 is worth fighting for. Because the families in District 5 in the city of Orlando are worth fighting for. Because the future is worth fighting for. And let me say this. That's been paraded around on the back of t-shirts with my face on it in a defamatory way. We won't go back. We won't go back. We won't go back. Because this is bigger than... Because this is bigger than politics. This is about the people. This is about progress. This is about power in the hands, or should I say, back in the hands of the people. And before I close, I want to share some words that has been guiding me through this journey that we all know I have been going through, that strengthens me as I think about the fight and about this community. It's from President Theodore Roosevelt. The man in the arena. It is not the critic who counts, not the man who points out how strong people stumble, or where the doers of deeds could have done better. The credit belongs to the one who is actually in the arena, who faces marred by dust, sweat, and blood, who strives valiantly, who ears, who comes short again and again, but who does actually strive to do good deeds, who spends themselves in a worthy cause, who at the best knows in the end the triumph of high achievement, and who at the end, at the worst, if they fail, at least fails while daring greatly. District 5, I am the woman in the arena. Not just yesterday, not just today, but forever will I be in the arena for the people. I will never stop fighting. I will never give up. So let's rise! Let's build! Let's win! And yes, let's make District 5 great again! So say it with me. District 5, we will rise! District 5, we will build! District 5, we will win! District 5, we won't go back! So I thank you all for all your confidence in me, all your pride. They said we wouldn't be here today. They said we couldn't do this. But God did. Let's go win! We can do this.
At this time, if we have any questions from the media for Commissioner Hill?
Well, as we see today, the community from day one has been by my side. They have been praying for me, they have been encouraging me. I have been going to thousands of District 5 residents' doors knocking, so much so where my opponent fears the strength and the love and this community embracing me, that they have put a full-fledged smear campaign together versus knocking on doors and telling them about their works. No, I believe in my community and they believe in me. As you see, even my seniors, which I have been falsely accused of, is standing with me because I have always stood with them, I have always taken care of them. I've harmed no one in this work that I've done, not just an elected official, but as a nurse of 30 years, which people seem to forget, that I took care of all people. And I have not stopped.
Any other question that we have from the media?
I just thank you. Let me close it up. Let me close it up. Let me thank you. I just want to thank you all for coming out. I know it's tough, you know, because you have to report. I just ask as we continue to follow what's going on, I have great representation, and I look forward to my exoneration of the truth. I just ask for everyone to be fair with their reporting. And I will continue to respond, my attorneys will continue to accommodate you all. But I know at the end, the people win, and as well as me. And I look forward to the day that the truth will be told. If I, if I had any doubt about my innocence, I would not be here today attempting to run this race, to continue the work. I have morals, I have integrity. And I would not do that and play with the emotions of my dear community where I grew up and people's emotions if I thought there was an inkling that I did something wrong to anyone or that I was not innocent. And I'll leave it with that. So thank you all for coming.
Fired up and ready to go, that's the chant from supporters of Regina Hill as she stands on the steps of Orlando City Hall kicking off her reelection campaign. She is continuing to face criminal fraud charges, but she says she is confident that she will be exonerated and also now seeking reelection. She announced her reelection back in March. And even amid this ongoing criminal proceedings against her, learning today that she says she has officially qualified for that ballot and now kicking off that reelection campaign. We'll have more coverage of this later today. Thanks for watching this live news conference here on Fox 35 News+.